The August 6th Town Council Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk.
All councilors are present.
Thank you. And for a salute to the flag, tonight we have with us members of the Silver Dolphins, and I'd like to ask Petty Officer Northville and his gentlemen to come forward and lead us in the pledge to the flag, please.
(Inaudible)
The first is a proclamation for someone who may be watching from Academy Point. I will take over this reading, and then I'll go to the other awards. "Celebrating Ruth Goings' 100th Birthday." Whereas Ruth Going was born on July 18, 1919, in a small college town near Reading, Pennsylvania, where her father owned an ice cream shop; and whereas Ruth married Patton-Going in 1945, and while her husband was in service with the United States Navy, she enjoyed living in different areas where they were stationed; and whereas while Ruth and Patton enjoyed the many places that they lived, they spent most of their time in Connecticut after Patton's tours of duty in the Navy; and whereas Ruth and Patton are fortunate enough to be the parents of Jonathan and Sharon, who made their home full of love and laughter, never forgetting the loads of ice cream; and whereas among the many opportunities and services that Ruth experienced, she most enjoyed her involvement with the Heart Association for the Town of Preston. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council joins with the residents and staff of Academy Point in wishing Ruth Going a very happy 100th birthday and many more. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 18th day of July, 2019." Happy birthday, Ruth.[138.88][138.88](Applause). Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have Jerry Larkin from Parks and Rec here. And tonight is the awards for the 2019 Fourth of July Parade.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yes, we did have a wonderful Fourth of July. Dozens of community organizations came out to support the parade. It was beautiful weather, and most of the council members were there as well, so thank you all. But tonight, we're here to recognize those who stood out in the parade. And we do have one of our parade judges here tonight, Andrea Keller, who is an instructor and adjudicator for several local marching bands, drum corps, and winter guards for over 20 years. She's going to help us give out the awards tonight. And Madam Mayor, if we could have you come out as well to hand out the awards. Our first group, we've already met, the Naval Submarine School Silver Dolphins, Petty Officer First Class Northville. And group won the most patriotic award.[202.15][202.15](Applause). And we have the best music award for the Emanuel Pathfinder Club, and we have Jose La Forest and a couple of his young adults here with him to accept the award for them.[255.62][255.62](Applause). And the best costumes were the Pyramid Shriner Clowns, Bill Russo and Steve Bruner are here for them.[292.83][292.83](Applause). And this next group wins the award almost every other year, I'm sure. The Groton Mystic Falcons Youth Football League, the best youth participation award. And the only person here who's here tonight is Kiona Strickland. The rest of them are down at Aquanic Plains at National Night Out, so, Kiona?[333.31][333.31](Applause). And the final award we have is a judge's choice award, and that goes to Sharp Canine Clippers. And Rebecca Scott and all are here to accept that award tonight.[361.12][361.12](Applause). And thank you again to everybody who took part in the parade. We had a lot of involvement, a lot of town resources go into this, Groton Town Police, we have fire departments, we have veterans organizations, service organizations, military certainly businesses. All those people come together to help celebrate the Fourth of July. So hats off to the community for another good year, and we'll see you back a year from now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin.[418.21][418.21](Applause). We appreciate all your efforts to make a wonderful community event for us, Mr. Larkin. Thank you. And we are to Roman numeral four. There are no public hearings this evening. Roman numeral five. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign this sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. I have several people signed up to speak this evening, and the first is, looks like Elaine Naught from Phoenix Drive. I apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly.
It's Knout.
Knout, thank you.
Yes. And I, my name is Elaine Knout, and I live on 99 Phoenix Drive. I am presenting to you tonight a petition with signers from the 8th and a small portion of the first districts that are within the vicinity of William Sealy School property. The petition reads as follows: Petition to resist the construction of Barrack-type apartments only for the William Sealy School property, and to find a developer to build a mixed-use development as promised to the neighborhood at the zone change meeting for the property on 8/2 of 2017. We, the undersigned, are the residents of the neighborhood District 8 and 1, near the former William Sealy School. Some months ago, many of us attended a zoning meeting by which the William Sealy School property was changed from a residential zone to a commercial zone. The planner, John Reiner, and others promised us that under no circumstances would the entrance to the property use Walker Hill Road as the main entrance to a project located on school property. In fact, he stated it would only be used as an emergency entrance. We were also promised that all efforts would be made to develop it as a mixed-use zone, which did not exist at the time. As a result of this promise, we did not oppose the zone change. For this promise to be fulfilled, the William Sealy School property and the contiguous Pleasant Valley Road property with entrances onto Route 12 must be developed together. None of this has occurred, and we understand that the town is interested in contracting with an apartment-only developer named Post Road Residential, who only builds Barrack-type apartments to singly develop the William Sealy School property. We have no interest in this part of Groton being wrongly used as a short-term success to flaunt at election time at the cost of Districts 8 and 1. As a result, the undersigned is opposed to any contract or agreement with Post Road Development and any similar type of developer who wants the town to adhere to using the premises made at the zone change meeting and use this special property for its highest and best use as a mixed-use development with egress onto Route 12. The petition contains 160 signatures. I was one of the people who walked this petition around. The signers did not only sign the petition, but many expressed their dissatisfaction with the lack of real economic development in Groton, and their fear at the fast-growing town spending and the 5% increases in salaries that this council gave to most department heads. We need more owner-occupied properties, which would include condos and businesses.
You have one minute? You have one minute?
Okay. We need development that gives a sense of place for all in Groton. Another boxy, ugly transient apartment complex will not achieve this.
Thank you. If you could leave the written remarks, please, with the clerk, that would be great. Thank you very much. Timothy Naught followed by...
May I ask something as a clarification?
Under response to citizens petitions. Timothy Naught, followed by Gretchen Chipparini.
Tim Knout, 99 Phoenix Drive.
I'm sorry about your name again, I apologize. Mr. Knout.
Timothy Knout.
Mr. Knout, yes. I apologize for pronouncing it wrong.
No, not at all, please. So, I'm a relatively new resident to Groton, living here for three years, but previously living in Stonington. My comments reflect, I was one of the people to help walk the petition around, and so my comments mirror what I heard from a lot of people, because, I mean, I've only been here for three years, but I talked to a lot of people who've been here for decades. So, anyway, I'm disappointed in the number of businesses I see leaving Groton. I would say half the storefronts in our downtown are empty. This situation calls for extra special effort, and building more apartments is not the answer to changing the image of Groton to being more attractive, and most importantly, adding to the grand list of the town in a productive way. Bedroom communities never fare well unless the bedrooms are owned by the occupants, who are motivated to keep them up so that they can be sold in the future. Alto business owners are motivated to maintain their owned and rented premises because customers would not walk through the door if they were not well-maintained. I view apartments as being at the bottom of the economic echelon, measured by their contribution to the betterment of the community. If this monstrosity of apartments ever got built, District 8 would easily have over 3,000 apartments. No other district in Groton comes close to this number of apartments. I would like to see you shove this type of thing in Mystic or Noyak. The residents would never stand for it, because they know the harm it would cause. The question is, why always District 8? It is extremely unfair for District 8 to fully bear the burden for some perceived short-term economic success in Groton. There's nothing uplifting about anything being proposed here, and you should go back to the drawing board before the election and insist that we handle our most valuable asset in the proper way with no property value-reducing apartments. Leaving it empty land until you get advisors to market it properly, which is, as of today, has never been done, as far as I can tell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knout. Gretchen Chipparini, followed by Eugenia Vilagre.
On December 15, 2015, a petition signed by 77 residents at the William Sealy School neighborhood was submitted to this body stating that the egress to this property has to be on Route 12. On August 2, 2017, two years ago, the zoning commission had a meeting for changing the William Sealy Zone from residential to commercial. Many residents showed up for this meeting. And following our comments made by Mr. Reiner at the zoning commission meeting, they're all from the disk I have from the town, right here. This is all big quote: "The town-wide marketing stunning by by Camon underscores 'to create a sense of place.' We need a nicer and newer product than what we have now. The William Sealy location is a town-owned property, and as a result, we are in the driver's seat as far as looking at uses and how to market the property. Working with the abutter, me, so that we can coordinate development efforts. One plus one equals three. If we can work together, will we get a better design site? We want to stress that the petition with 77 signatures brought to the council regarding traffic and access to the site has gotten our attention. It is our intent that Sealy School Drive is not to be used as the main entrance for this development. We want to see in the main access point for this development to go on Route 12. That is one of the many reasons why we are working with the abutter, to combine the properties and hoping to get a better overall development, but also for a better means of access to the property. It's our goal to have that happen. Almost daily, if not every few days, we are talking with the abutter about where things are and the status of the property and some of our marketing efforts. We are looking to develop a unique livable place in Groton, not just another development. We want these places and these developments to be integrated into the surrounding community, to be an asset not only to the town, but also to the neighborhood. We want to send a clear message to developers of what we want in Groton, once the zoning is in place. We are looking for multifamily and mixed-use on the overall site between the budding properties and us. We can really help to direct that. We may be looking in a year to 18 months from now at rezoning this to a mixed-use zone. The intent is to get a better product through our zoning." That's end of, end quote. The representative from the EDC was there, and she stated at that meeting, "We need to focus on quality mixed-use redevelopment and to attract investment and population." Here's the reality check, two years later, my reality check. One, it's a completely false statement by John Reiner that the economic development team has talked to me daily or every few days. I have not talked to them since before that meeting in 2017. Two, the last council turned down a commercial broker that I brought to them so that we could market the two properties together to get a blended project with access to Route 12. Three, I originally brought Goman New York to the town to offer them as a consultant, which is their main line of business. OFRCA hired Camoin. Four, this 30-acre prime location property needs to be marketed by a national commercial broker, which Goman New York is not. Instead, your staff punted and went without my involvement with a two-bit broker, Goman New York, who is not even a Connecticut regional broker. They are not known outside of Glastonbury, Connecticut. I do not know of any effort on the town's part to find a broker with the national exposure that this property needs and deserves. The attitude is, it is District 8, so who cares? Five, with no effort to find the appropriate broker, you have gotten to an apartment-only developer named Post Road Development. I spoke with them, they have no interest in mixed-use or anything commercial. As I said before, they build cookie-cutter apartment complexes that are downright ugly. Here's a sample of one. Post Road, as most apartment developers MO is to throw in a swimming pool in a meeting room, which is window dressing, to fool you into wanting them. I guarantee you that in five years from Ockinsip, it will be a low-income project, and they will most likely have flipped the property to a less-than-seller owner. It will not create a sense of place to Groton or even to those who live there. There is nothing unique about a boxy, nondescript apartment complex. It is not a nicer product than we already have here. The traffic will exit onto Walker Hill Road, because I have no interest in speaking with me, so that an entrance can be on Route 12. A Barrack-style apartment development not be integrated into the surrounding community. Any residential expert will tell you that an apartment complex like that will never be an asset to a town, most certainly not to the neighborhood. Property values in our area will be hit hard as this property deteriorates. No one wants to live near apartments where there is no ownership, as there is with mixed-use projects with condo and business owners. Owners care, apartment renters generally do not. Seven, there has been no effort to change the zone from commercial to mixed-use, as Mr. Reiner so determinately stated at the zone change meeting. Why should he make the effort if he convinced you that more cookie-style apartments will be an equal success to mixed-use? Mixed-use is significantly better and thus takes a whole lot more effort and patience than pressing the easy button of apartments. Your economic development team never got in the driver's seat.
You have one minute, please?
Fine. As Mr. Reiner said, they would. Thank you very much.
Eugenia Vilagre, followed by Joan Chambers. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic that has not signed up yet?
... statement from Mr. Potter that I can read into the record?
Okay. It's up to you. The clerk has a statement.
I can do that later.
All right.
Okay, go ahead. Did you want to speak, ma'am?
(Inaudible).
The lady in the back, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
You do? You can, you could sign this, please. Can you pass it over to...
(Inaudible).
Yep, yep, yep. Oh, okay. Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Go ahead, Eugenia, you're fine. And then Ms. Chambers can come up.
My name is Eugenia Vilagre. I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton, and I'm here representing Groton conservation advocates today. I am here today to ask, are we protecting our trees in Groton the way we should? GCA is very concerned with what is happening to our trees in Groton and in the state of Connecticut. First, there is a recent loss of many mature, healthy trees as a result of the development of the Merit property to build the Consolidated Middle School. We knew about the ones at the top of the hill, but not those so close to Fort Hill Brook at the bottom of the hill, north and south of Route 1. Clear cuts were made on town land, land south of Route 1, and on state land, north of Route 1 as well. Then statewide, and this includes Groton, there is tree damage from extreme weather events like severe storms and drought, the result of our changing climate, and major insect and invasive plant infestations that have left many trees damaged or dead in our forests and residential areas. People really need to take care when walking in some of our state and municipal parks. Groton's trees and forests filter our air, reduce greenhouse gases, and store carbon, safeguard drinking water supplies, provide essential habitat for wildlife and for humans, create recreational opportunities for people. They're beautiful, and they provide shade. Trees give so much to us. What are we doing for them? I checked our town statutes to see what I could find on trees in Groton. This is what I found. Ordinance #228, Article 2 Trees, was passed on June 4, 1995, in association with Groton becoming a tree city. We all passed the sign on our way in here today. Groton has been a tree city for 24 years. To become a tree city, there are four standards, all of which are provided for in the ordinance. Here's a summary. The purpose of the ordinance is to regulate flora in town to promote public health, safety, and general welfare. The ordinance provides, for one, the appointment of a tree warden by the town council, who's given full power and authority over all trees and shrubs located within public areas and to a certain extent on private property. Two, permits must be obtained from the tree warden to disturb any tree in any public area. Disturbed means anything from carving your initials into a tree, to planting, spraying, fertilizing, pruning, removing, damaging, tapping, transplanting, or cutting a tree on public property. Three, abatement of nuisance trees. And nuisance trees are considered the kind of trees that are, for instance, we had a nuisance tree situation on our property. Our neighbor refused to do anything about a tree that we were convinced was going to fall down at any moment, and he claimed to have gotten an arborist to check out the tree, and the arborist said, oh, it's going to be there for 20 more years, and the next storm that came through it came down over into our yard, damaging a lot of property, but fortunately not our house. Anyway, that, the abatement of nuisance trees seems to be a really key part of what the tree warden is responsible for. And then there's the Town Conservation Commission, because they were selected to serve as a tree advisory board to ensure that the intent and provisions of the ordinance are carried out to the fullest extent possible. The board is also authorized, and this is important, to give notice and consultation on the amendment of this article, should they feel the need to amend the article, update it, or do anything to make it more reflective of our current circumstances. And of course, I mentioned that this ordinance was passed 24 years ago. I was delighted to learn that a conservation commission...
You have one minute?
... was given the task of protecting Groton's trees, and protect them we must. But is there a plan to ensure the protection of mature, healthy trees, like those cut off Route 1? The town will be replacing many trees, but did you know that it takes two trees, 30 to 40 years, to replace one of those trees? A new study published in the journal Science in July found that the tree canopy of a town is critically important because of their role in reducing carbon emissions. The article also emphasized the urgency of action now to expand our trees and our forests. We should avoid cutting down mature, healthy trees at all cost. Given what we know about climate change, we don't have time to wait 30 or 40 years. In the last two weeks, I have met with the mayor, the town staff, and the conservation commission to find out where things stand. All of my questions have been satisfactorily answered, and it is clear that everyone is aware of the situation with our trees and motivated to be more protective of trees. The town council has been decidedly more protective of the environment than their predecessors. Being supportive of our local...
Your time is up, ma'am.
... land trust is critically, just a couple...
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
All right. Well, you have my text.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of the remarks for the record, please?
I do, thank you.
Thank you very much. Joan Chambers, please.
Joan Chambers, 130 Walker Hill. These apartments you guys are talking about putting in, it is disgrace to us. My family has lived on Walker Hill for over 80 years. Not many have, are still around anymore, that have put in the longevity to stay in a homestead. I will never be able to sell my house. I got a water tower directly across the street from me now, because of the new water tank going in. What's this going to do to the water tank system, our water system, if you put these apartments in? We already have hardly any water pressure up there. Traffic is horrendous, from 5:30 a.m. until 9:30 a.m. It's hit or miss if you're going to get out of our driveway in one piece. During the school year, the buses stop, everybody blocks up the road. Nobody stops at the stop signs. We've already had one child hit and got a broken leg. From 2:30 to about 6:30 p.m., it's the same problem. I am not a millionaire. I do not have air conditioning installed into my home. But we have to keep our windows shut at night to sleep, because of the people driving up and down the road, drag racing, and everything else going on up there. Don't bother calling the police, because they don't stop at the stop signs. And putting these block houses in, these apartments, what's it going to do to our home values? It's going to kill us. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else that's signed up to speak, so we will go to the clerk's reading of the letter, unless there is another person here that would like to speak? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you would read what we all received in the mail, I believe.
Yeah, this is from Thomas W. Potter, 154 Walker Hill Road. He reads, "Years ago, the town of Groton decided to sell the Noyak Elementary School property for private development. The neighbor told the town council that they did not want this property to be used for a private commercial development, and they wanted a community garden there instead." The town council will listen... The town council listened very carefully to the wishes of the Knowak School neighborhood, and it was granted. In addition, the town, um, town of Groton spent hundreds of thousands of, uh, property taxpayers' money to demolish the Knowak Elementary School building and comply with OSHA regulations regarding the removal of hazardous materials. The Knowak School neighborhood spoke, and the town council recognized its duty and responsibilities to listen with due diligence. Then, uh, they acted in a manner that protected these neighbor, Knowak neighbors. Not as many years ago, the town manager had told the property owners living in the corner of Seeley School Drive and Senkow Avenue, a residential neighborhood, that he would keep her informed about any planned uses of the William Seeley Elementary School that had been closed for a variety of reasons. Then one August morning, the neighbor spoke to, uh, woke up to read an article in the New London Day about a planned purchase and sale agreement that was pending for the William Seeley School, um, property. Several of the neighbors, including myself, attended town council meetings and spoke against this planned agreement because it posed a potential problem with increased congestion on our normally quiet town street. Uh, Walker Hill Road, William Seeley Drive School and Senkow Avenue. Many more of the neighbors attended a public hearing with the town council on the matter and expressed their wishes that any access to enter or leave the development of William Seeley School property had to be from Route 12 and not involve Walker Hill Road or Seeley School Drive. At one point during the ongoing discussions with the town council, we submitted a petition of, with more than 50 signatures, which stipulated that words specifying entrance to or departure from any development on the William Seeley School property must be from Route 12. This time, the town council did not recognize its duty and responsibility to listen to, with due diligence, and they authorized the town manager to sign the sale and purchase agreement without any of the requested stipulations reflecting our concerns about entrance to and departure from the development of William Seeley property. I subsequently met with the developers' represent, representatives and told him about the objections raised by the neighbors. He acknowledged his information and said he would keep it in mind. As many years, many of you know, this contractual agreement between the town and Concora was eventually terminated, apparently by mutual agreement. Which brings us to the next planned cycle. The town's hoped to sell William Seeley property to a prospective developer, whom I understand only deals in the building of multi-story apartments. This is not a mixed-use intention, even though we now have such a zoning designation, and the Director of Planning and Development assured us several years ago that he was, this was the ultimate planned use for the property. Again, the neighbors are faced with the same concerns and objections that were presented to the town council before, along with the intended use of the property. Another current petition has been circulated and contains over 100 signatures. This means that the mere passage of time has not decreased or reduced the interest in, or the level of concern being expressed by the Seeley School neighbors, both in terms of the intended use of this property and the accessibility to and from such development. The William Seeley School neighborhood has spoken. I respectfully, respectfully request the members of the town council to recognize their duty and responsibility to listen with due diligence and to act in a manner that will also protect the William Seeley School neighbors. Please reject this type of planned development."
Thank you. So we are on, unless, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, we are on to room numeral six, responses to citizens petitions and represent, or Councilor Franco wanted to speak.
No, I had to, I want to clarify what was said by Ms. Knox. Would you mind coming back up to the podium? You had said barrack style housing or barrack apartments. Can you just define that?
Barrack style is, as on the picture that was shown you. Very plain on the outside, cookie cutter, um, balconies and windows. Basically looking like as someone would walk by, a low-income housing development.
Does that clarify?
I think so.
Okay. Do you have further questions?
No, thank you.
Are there any other councilors who wish to respond? Councilors of Barry, and then Councilor Baumgartner.
I understand the concern of many of the neighbors about this type of housing, and I certainly will consider it as we go forward.
Thank you.
Uh, I am concerned, however, Joan Chambers left immediately after giving her presentation, but I was concerned about drag racing on Walker Hill. Is that something you observe also?
Uh, I haven't observed it, but many are here. They haven't observed it.
Thank you, Mrs. Knod. You don't, you don't need to stay standing. You're, you're welcome. Just if you, like, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
I just wanted to address, address that to, to the, um, town manager. Perhaps we give a greater police presence there to, to curtail that. And also about the absence or the lack of water pressure at the top of the hill.
That's the city, their utilities.
And, uh-
Wait a minute, what was that?
The water tower.
The water tower.
It's in the town, but it's-
Can we communicate with, can we communicate with, with the city to let them know that we've had a citizen here complaining at this council meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Baumgartner, please.
I'd just like to respond to, um, Ms. Villagra. Uh, I too share any of your concerns regarding, um, just up the hill here, quite a few trees have come down since the construction, and I think we could, should do everything in our power to, uh, look to plant some trees moving forward, not just in that surrounding, um, area, but also throughout the town. Um, I think there are a lot of, uh, interesting ideas that have been generated from, um, by many councilors, uh, present and that, um, that have heard in the last few weeks. Um, but, you know, I, I think this, Ms. Villagra had mentioned, perhaps looking to update the ordinances regarding the trees, and, uh, perhaps that's something we, we ought to look at, uh, before, uh, you know, within the next few months, so, um, I'll look at that. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Councilor Schmidt, Councilor Overy, and then Mr. Burke wanted to add something as well.
I just wanted to say that, uh, up off of Sandy Hollow Road, I've noticed that there's an area that they have evidently cut down wide swaths of land, of trees, and they're piled up there. I don't know what is going to happen there, but I was very concerned, as you said, that all of these trees are cut down and, uh, they do need to be replaced, and so we are concerned about that. I'm particularly concerned.
I think those are the houses that are going in that they presented to us last year, maybe? Not in that area?
No, no, it's near Whittles.
Oh, okay.
On the way to Whittles.
That's, okay, I got you. Councilor Overy, and then Mr. Burke.
Um, I'm just wondering, I have not, but I'm just wondering, Eugenia, if anybody has looked at the completion plan for when the school is completed? Because usually when you have a plan, it incorporates what has to be put back onto the property in plantings. So I think that might be something that we could certainly look at, but you might want to as well. And I would hope that there's a plan for the other side of the road where they cut them down. But, um, I had the pleasure of, uh, working with, um, the town to plant a couple of trees this year down by the new, uh, community center. I just wanted to say in reference to what might come up to William Seeley School, I would hope that you might have some faith in the integrity of the people that sit up here, to try to do what's best for Groton. Uh, I hear what you're saying, even though somebody's not listening to me now in the back that I'm directing my conversation towards, but that's okay. Um, I have been part of the selection committee for some of the properties that may be proposed for Groton, and I want to tell you, they're not what you're talking about at all. They're something that you would be proud of, and something that we could be proud of, to be part of bringing that to Groton. There is a housing need. It is not for single-family houses. I'm a real estate agent, I know how much our market has changed, and our market is not looking for single-family houses. They're looking for simple living. You may not agree with it, but it's true. I wish it wasn't. I'd be doing a whole lot better. But, um, I think that this group is taking great pride in trying to put the appropriate things in the appropriate places. I will tell you that, um, it's probably not the correct thing to sally, but I think Gretchen's remarks are self-serving.
Oh, Councilor Overy, please refrain from making those kinds of comments.
Well, I made it, and I meant it. So have a little faith in the fact that we want Groton to be good too. I also live in the same area. I want that area to be as pleasant as it is now. And, uh, have a little faith in what we're trying to do, and I think you'll be pleased with the outcome. And that we will be doing whatever is chosen. There'll be public meetings, there'll be input, uh, and it, I'm quite sure it'll be residential, not commercial, and I think it'll be in addition to your neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burke?
I just wanted to point out, uh, on the tree removal at the middle school, that the plans were reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Inland Wetlands Commission as to which trees would be removed. It was designed to minimize the removal. There was a lot, though. Um, but just so people know, uh, it's obviously not going to make up for everything, but there's about 260 to 270 trees that'll be replanted on site there. That's part of the plan.
Thank you, and I just wanted to add, um, I received that email today, um, indicating that there would be some replanting on the school property, however, there will not be any replanting on this, the right-of-way that the state owns, um, or that the utility owns. So they, they have said straight up, they're not going to put anything back where they, where they cut down for the utilities. However, the town is going to put back, as Mr. Burke said, a couple hundred trees, um, but I, in my opinion, I think we need to do more. Any other councilors? Councilor Heed?
Um, yeah, in regards to, um, Seeley School, I'm also on the selection committee or review committee, whatever, whatever we call it. Uh, we've provided a lot of due diligence in reviewing, uh, the property proposals up there, and I understand your concerns. Um, but, uh, if I can speak from my own experience, I've lived in, uh, Texas, I've lived in Washington, DC, I've lived in Boston, um, and I've come to Groton and I, don't take this the wrong way, but the housing stock is disappointing. Um, this proposal for post-road, uh, if you haven't gone down to see the facility that they, what's called the Courser in New Haven, uh, Councilor, uh, Overy and I went down there. It, it's amazing. I would sell my house and move in there tomorrow. But I believe that, um, something else may be in the works at this point. But all that being said, the, I've seen it, it's really beautiful. You have to go down and you have to take a look. You need to do your due diligence as well, with all, with all due respect.
Councilor Heed has the floor right now.
Right, exactly. Guess I'm finished.
Okay. Um, Councilor Baumgartner wanted to speak again unless Councilor Parker or Atwater wished to speak. Councilor Atwater.
I would just like to say that, to Ms. Villagra, that she was cut short when she was reading the part that said, "This council has been decidedly more protective of the environment than their predecessors," and I thought that should be right into the record.
Thank you. Councilor Baumgartner.
Just to the, uh, Walker Hill, uh, neighbors that are here, first and foremost, thank you for coming. Uh, there's no way we know, um, what is happening on the ground unless, hey, either you show up, uh, here or we show up at your doorstep. Um, so I think that's incredibly important, especially as the process moves forward. Um, I've been a big believer in, in the concept of, of shirets, you know, that you can go to, uh, you can participate in, um, with your town on, on developing, um, the neighborhood that you live in and are raising your families in, and, um, and so it's important that you are involved in the process, um, and because no one is impacted it more, um, you know, impacted by it more than you are. Um, so, um, you know, if you've been following in, in the newspaper, um, originally in old, in old Mystic, there was going to be a mixed-use, um, mixed-use zone, and, uh, many of the neighbors, um, spoke up during that process, and, um, ultimately, it, it was not designated a mixed-use zone. Um, and that's in large part because, again, neighbors were participated in the process in an open and transparent way, so, uh, I think all of the councilors here are in agreement on that, and I, at least, at the very least, you have that pledge from me, that, um, we can make this process as transparent and as inclusive as, as possible. Um, and I too am a big believer in mixed-use, um, obviously where appropriate, um, but I, I think that's also a shared, um, you know, a shared goal of, of this council is to promote mixed-use, um, all throughout Groton, um, because, um, that, that can include homeownership and also, um, bit, commercial businesses that, you know, you can grab a, a coffee or a sandwich in, um, and that's very important, so, and it's great for the environment too, so, um, but I, I look forward to, um, hearing more from your concerns and, and ultimately, um, you know, um, meeting many of, of, uh, your fellow neighbors as well. So, thank you.
Um, Mr. Burke, Councilor Heed wanted to finish his remarks.
Yeah, I apologize, uh, the mayor, uh, knocked me off my train of thought, um, so, yeah. We must be related, right? So, uh, anyways, what I was saying is this process began years ago, actually under previous councils, uh, previous RTMs, um, and this has been, you know, a very long process. Um, the, the letter of intent was actually the beginning of the next stage, which would be neighborhood engagement. So some things were said tonight that weren't entirely true, and I think it's just a lack of information. Uh, so that process, I understand, it was going to begin next week. Um, and further, in terms of working with the abutting property owner, um, you know, I probably shouldn't say this, but, uh, that owner is a little bit difficult to work with. Uh, I love her dearly, she's a lot of fun, uh, to hang around with, she's a great talker. Um, but when it comes to moving forward as, as a partner, it's, it's been a challenge. Uh, so, and I think most people understand that.
Is that Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke?
Um, just to point out, I contacted Chief Fasaro, he's going to do some extra enforcement for speeds in the area, um, so, please don't speed, it'd be the ones caught. Um, and, and asked him to make sure his police officers know not to speed or go through stop signs. And then I've reached out to, uh, the, uh, Keith, Mayor Hedrick, and Ron Gudey at the Groton Utilities, just, uh, looking for the water pressure, so.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you for bringing your concerns about the traffic through there, but please always call the police department if you guys have a problem. They don't know what's going on until you tell them. They can travel around the areas and make sure all areas are safe, but please make sure you call because they don't know. And they may not be going through a stop sign because they get into a call, so it may not be a high, just going fast call, but they may be going to a medical call or something, and may go through the stop signs. Not excusing it, but I'm just giving a little clarification. But please make sure you call if you have issues in your neighborhood. Secondly, thank you guys again for coming out and voicing your concerns. Um, some information, as been previously stated, is maybe a little confusing, that information hasn't been brought forth, but there will be more information coming forward. We are working hard on trying to get what's best for Groton. All of us might not agree on it, or the town may not agree on, the citizens may not agree on it, but we're trying to grow Groton, make it a better community, community. I do have to point out that saying low-income housing is mildly offensive to me. I don't know if you guys have been down through Grandford Manor, they have changed their whole outlook, so saying, but, uh, it, I just want to make sure that it gets out there. That's offensive. I don't know if anybody on TV were, was offended, but I am for you, someone stating that.
It's not necessary, thank you.
It's not necessary, but just to, it, thank you. But again, thank you for coming out.
Councilor Franco?
I also am very concerned about the amount of trees that were taken down as well, and I was very surprised. I knew they were putting sewer lines in, but I was also the big swath. I was also surprised, and it made people worry that they were putting in entrances there to the school. So, um, I was with you, I also was a little bit surprised, and I'm glad we're going to be replacing them, and I also saw the invasive bamboo that was, it highlighted the invasive bamboo in that area. Um, but I also am concerned about that as well. And, um, when it comes to the William Seeley School, I understand your concerns, and I would be, I have a school that's going to be empty near my home as well, and I try and take that in consideration when we look at your neighborhood and what was best there. And from the understanding- in consideration when we look at your neighborhood and what was best there. And from the understanding and contact that I have had, people said they didn't want commercial development coming up Walker Hill Road. And I completely respect that. And so when I go forward and I thought residential would be compatible to that neighborhood, and I didn't understand that you may think differently. So I look forward to the community involvement and discussing what you're, more of what you're looking for. The town may not always be able to work with abutting private owners for that, for properties. So we have to start, look at all different aspects. And if we're going to market this property solo, what would be the best for that property then? And that's something that has to be thought about as well. But I understand and I'm concerned about your feelings as well. And I look forward to talking to you more. Thank you.
I think everybody's had a chance to talk. So I'm going to take my turn now. Thank you all for coming out. And as Councilor Parker said, unless we hear from you, we're not really sure. So thank you for voicing your opinions to us. And we will do our best. Know that we have the best interest of the whole town at heart, and we will keep your concerns in mind as we move forward. Regarding the trees, thank you for coming out and addressing this publicly. Later on tonight, under Other Business, I'm going to make a proposal to the council regarding some trees and possibly doing some reforestation on a parcel of land. So I'll be addressing that further on, under Other Business, tonight. Okay. We are on to Consent Calendar. Councilor Baumgartner, if you could move the whole Consent Calendar, please?
Yes, we do. Make a motion to move the Consent Calendar.
Is there a second? Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by O'Briain. Any discussion on either the minutes or the trust fund contributions? Councilor O'Briain?
I just thought it might be nice if upon the contributions, it might merit notice of some of the numbers.
You're welcome to do so if you'd like.
Well, I appreciate what everybody gives, but there were a couple that were a little bit larger, and I wanted to acknowledge that and thank the foundation, the Browning Foundation has given $10,000 to the library for miscellaneous uses. And also Walmart has given $1,500 to the police for an outreach program. So all of these are important, but I thought those were kind of special.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments on the minutes or the special trust fund contributions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the Consent Calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Communications and reports, town councilors. Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, I, today I attended the National Night Out Festival in Aquanet Plains. Councilor Franco attended, as did the mayor, and councilors Atwater and O'Briain. It was a great time. And I received various correspondences from citizens throughout the town, one of which in regards to some construction taking place in Mystic. And manager Burt responded, I think, within two minutes. And so thank you for your very timely and quick response.
We're having a meeting with Aquarian. Some issues in Mystic with Aquarian, and Gary and I have a meeting with them on Thursday to discuss issues, because there are some other phases later. We'll make it clear that we want things to be going a lot better than they are.
Thank you.
And I think that's all. So thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Attended City Day and the TVCCA Annual Board Meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting, as well as the certification meeting, where we had some stakeholders show up, which was very well-attended, very insightful. I attended the Groton National Night Out tonight, which was hosted by the Groton Police Department. And I received communications from residents regarding trees, roads, blight, and athletic fields.
Councilor Heed?
All right. Councilor O'Briain and I actually both attended the U.S. Coast Guard Bark Eagle Welcome Home Party, which was great. So was John Burt, Town Manager. Actually, so was Chris Conley and Joe Delacruz. So that was a really good time. Great food, if you ever get a chance to go. It was amazing. Went and attended City Day last Friday. And then on Monday, I attended Conservation Commission with the mayor.
Councilor O'Briain?
I think everybody's mentioned everything I've been doing. I guess the only thing I would add is I attended a thank you to the donors for always home. It was a very pleasant evening. And we're hoping that things will continue on. This is a great organization. And Betsy is part of the board, and they really do an excellent job for people that really need that special help.
Thank you. Councilor Atwater?
This morning, I attended the Children's First Groton meeting. And at that meeting, they decided to partner with Ledge Light on a three-year program to improve nutrition for young children. And I'd also like to announce that the Mystic No-Ant Library is hosting a Coffee with Councilors on Saturday, September 17th, 10:00 to 12:00 in the morning. And you're all invited.
Thank you. Councilor Schmidt?
No report.
Councilor Sipari?
I received communications from two of our taxpayers, one of whom complained about the traffic on River Road and Mystic, saying there are a lot of speeders there. Someone's dog was killed not too long ago, and next it'll be a child. I communicated with John Burt, and he's looked into it for us. John?
Chief Fisaro put a patrol out there for three days from the 29th to 31st. It will be ongoing occasionally, but they did three solid days of patrols just to see what's happening there. The, the speed limit's 25 along there. It's clearly posted. They had officers in the day shift and evening shift doing traffic posts. During that time, 90 motor vehicles were observed traveling both northbound and southbound. Average speed was between 15 miles per hour to 29 miles per hour. Of the 90, there were eight vehicles that went 30 miles per hour or more, with the highest 36, being 11 miles an hour over the speed limit. And they did stop everyone that went over and give some sort of enforcement action to those over the speed limit that day. But they will be continuing to monitor and go out there.
The second thing that one of our constituents wrote to me about was difficulty finding large print books at the library. And John looked into that also when I forwarded that to him.
We have a number of large print books there, but if there's a certain book that sometimes I order them, and I accidentally get large print, oh dang it. But if somebody has a particular one they're really interested in, they can talk to the library, and they'd be willing to order it, Jen Mealy said, so.
Very good. Councilor O'Briain wanted to add something, and then I'll go.
Yes, I wanted to thank John, Town Manager, I'm sorry. I had a gentleman stop me at the basketball game the other night and tell me that he didn't think the new entrance to the base was being taken care of properly. And I got in touch with the Town Manager, and he and Public Works went out there and cleaned it up, and it looks quite nice now. So thank you very much.
I should add, though, we need to meet with the base to figure out exactly who's going to do what in the future. But while that's going on, we just got out there and got it cleaned up, so.
Very good. So, lots going on in the past couple weeks. We had the Lieutenant Governor in town, who was here for the press conference. Councilor Parker attended the press conference for the kickoff of the complete count effort here in town. As part of that, then after the press conference was over, the Lieutenant Governor asked to do a short business tour. And she was very impressed with Thayer Mahan when we went over there. And then we visited several shops downtown Mystic, and she was very pleased with the economic development that's going on in town. So that was nice. I met with the two people from the Groton Housing Authority that came to us with some concerns. And we, in turn, presented our concerns to them. And I think it's improved communications going forward was stressed by our side. And hopefully, we'll start seeing some of that in return. Several constituent meetings. I also had the Good Fortune. I enjoyed it very much. It was kind of a weird thing, but the State Department of Transportation hired a couple organizations to do safety examination of our roads. And so we met with these people that were doing a safety study of town, and it looked at the crash data. And it was kind of alarming at first, but then when we broke it down, a member of the police department was there, and he told us where the causes of all the crashes, and we're in pretty good shape, all things considered. So it was nice. But we did relay some concerns. For example, the 184 and 117 intersection that we've had comments on as far as turning lanes there, and also the ramp off of 95 where it meets King's Highway, where it meets Long Hill Road, where it meets 12, the five-way intersection. So we expressed our concerns about several places, and they have agreed to consider that and bring it forward when they're doing their planning. A gentleman from Liberty Bank wants to get involved in the community, and that's always a great thing. So we're happy that Liberty Bank wants to work with people in our community, and I've put him in touch with our schools. And happy birthday, Councilor Schmidt. It's not today, but we missed it last week, so. Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
The RTM did not meet last week, I mean, excuse me, last month, due to lack of business. And the meeting's been canceled for August also because there is no business. They only meet if they have business.
Clerk of the Council?
Please report that all candidate slates were delivered on time and that they're not finalized until October 15th, although I encourage any changes, anybody who's going to resign as a candidate and replacements to please do, keep in mind, I need absentee ballots 31 days, have them ready in 31 days before the election. So at October 15th doesn't jive with everything else. So also petitions for any placements on the ballot or for primary, if there are any out. I'm only aware of one. It's not for a primary, it's just for a position on the ballot. That has to do tomorrow by 4:00 PM. If it's late, it doesn't get counted.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, and the other thing, oops, sure.
About that? Councilor Parker?
The, when they sign those, they have to be a resident of the town that they're representing in? The people that's signature is correct?
Oh, any petition for our municipal election, absolutely. They have to be a resident elector, not just a resident. They have to be registered to vote.
Registered to vote. But the people signing, you double check?
Have to be registered to vote.
Registered to vote and have to be in the town?
Correct.
Okay. And you always double check those?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Thank you.
The other thing I'd like, I'm happy to report is we did receive our grant from the historic district document, excuse me, historic document preservation grant, $7,500 this year. So for, that's really nice. So I'll be using that toward preservation of our books.
Wonderful. Thank you. Town Manager?
I was at the Lieutenant Governor meeting, which was a very good meeting. She did send a handwritten note afterwards thanking us, which was really nice. Imagine, if you do that, you have to write a lot of those. Met with David McBride, the new Groton Long Point president, newly elected. He's also on our Economic Development Commission. We met, talked about having better communications and relations, and not that it's been bad, but even doing more to improve it. So it was a good meeting. And I was also involved in the Groton Housing Authority Board Meeting. And I've noticed communications have stepped up since then, so that was good. I want to remind everyone that Thursday, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, is the Groton Long Point Bridge Listening Session at the Town Annex in this room. So Thursday, from 5:00 to 8:00. There'll be different stations, I think, to gather information and comments. And so please, anybody interested, please attend. Other than that, we did receive notification that we received the 2018 Government Finance Officers' Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our 2018 CAFER, our annual financial report. And then, which we've gotten that many years in a row now, the Police Commissioners Association of Connecticut chose three chiefs to honor each here at their distinguished chiefs awards dinner. And Chief Fisaro was one of the three chosen for this year. Fortunately, he's unable to attend, but it's a good honor. That is all I have.
I forgot to mention that I met Mr. McBride as well at the Economic Development Commission meeting. And it was, it was nice to meet him because I hadn't had the pleasure yet. So thank you very much for reminding me of that. We have no department heads here. I have gone to committee reports. I have no committee, the full report, no temporary rules. Personnel appointments, Councilor Heed, do you have anything to report?
We'll be meeting the third Tuesday this month, August 20th, to review several applications. There are actually several vacancies as well on groton-CT.gov. Looks like there's about 10. So if anybody's interested, we do have a lot of vacancies.
Which committee does that, I'm sorry?
Personnel and appointments. It's Councilor Schmidt, Sipari, and myself. And it's a public meeting, so you can attend. And that's all.
Rules?
No report.
Councilor Sipari, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to go back to the report from the Town Manager. I was pleased to receive the financial report for the year, indicating that we were, our income exceeded our expenditures by about, let's see, about eight or nine percent. And I think that we're doing well in that regard. And it's, I think it's very important for, we are on the council to know that the money is being spent as we've appropriated. And I think we have to keep a very close watch on that. And I just wanted to thank you for that report that was included in your monthly.
Very good. We are on to Roman numeral 10, new business. 10A, 2019-32 for downtown Groton TIF District and TIF District Master Plan. This is on page 15. Councilor Parker, please.
Resolution 2019-32 to adopt the downtown Groton Tax Increment Financing District and downtown Groton TIF District Master Plan. Whereas the Town of Groton has completed a townwide market analysis with a recommendation to research and implement tax increment financing, TIF, T-I-F, in Groton. And whereas TIF is used to invest in economic development by allowing some or all of public and or private costs associated with the development to be financed over time by increases in the property tax revenues that are generated by the new development. And whereas the TIF District will contribute to the economic growth and well-being of Groton. And whereas the Town of Groton adopted a tax increment financing plan, policy, excuse me, on March 6, 2018, which outlines a process of planning for reviewing, approving, and implementing TIF districts. And whereas the Town Council, in accordance with Chapter 105B of the Connecticut General Statutes, referred to the downtown, referred the downtown Groton TIF District Master Plan to the Planning Commission more than 90 days prior to the public hearing to determine the plan's consistency with the Groton Plan of Conservation and Development. And whereas the Planning Commission determined the downtown Groton TIF District Master Plan is consistent with the Groton Plan of Conservation and Development. And whereas the Groton TIF Advisory Committee voted to recommend the downtown Groton TIF District Master Plan to the Economic Development Commission. And whereas the Economic Development Commission recommends passing the downtown Groton TIF District Master Plan. And whereas a public hearing was advertised in the paper of general circulation within Groton and was held on July 2, 2019, for said plan and district. And whereas the tax increment financing plan will be a new economic development tool to encourage development and redevelopment in planned-targeted areas in Groton. And whereas the Town Council determined that the downtown Groton TIF district area is in need of rehabilitation and redevelopment work and is suitable for mixed-use and downtown development. And whereas the original assessed value of the proposed tax increment district plus the original assessed value of the other TIF districts is less than 10% of the total value of taxable property within Groton as of October 1, 2018. And now therefore, be it resolved pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 105D, Section 7-339CC through 7-339KK, the Town Council hereby establishes a TIF district consisting of approximately 145.05 acres located along both sides of Aquanet Road and Long Hill Road, also known as US Route 1, from Ruddington Road to west to Sunnyside Park. It is bound, bounded on the south by the Amtrak rail line, and the north boundary generally follows the downtown Development District, DDD, and office multifamily, OMF, zone lines, which are specifically depicted in the proposed downtown Groton Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan map. And be it further resolved that the Town Council hereby adopts the downtown Groton TIF- Tiff District Master Plan as recommended and amended due to comments received during the public hearing on July 2, 2019. And be it further resolved that said district and plan shall go into effect on August 6, 2019. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Franco.
This has been a long time coming. We have gone through this Tiff Plan inside and out, over and over. I mean, it's been, so I just think, I'm really happy that it's going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else with comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-32 Downtown Groton Tiff District and Tiff District Master Plan say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. I feel like we should celebrate.
Yes.
Item 10B, 2019-457 to excess property redevelopment, 517-529 Gold Star Highway. On page 17, Counselor Franco.
Resolution to enter into an option agreement with PJNA LLC for 117 and 517 and 529 Gold Star Highway. Whereas the town of Groton owns excess buildings and properties that are no longer needed for public uses, where that had been acquired through foreclosures due to unpaid taxes. And whereas the town has been marketing Gold Star Highway property for a number of years and whereas the town has been working with the selective preferred developer team with PJNA LLC as the purchasing entity. And a proposal for the say, and whereas an option agreement for the eventual purchase of the property has been prepared by the town attorney and is ready to be signed by PJNA LLC and the town manager after authorization by the town council. And therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to enter into an option agreement with PJNA LLC for 517 and 529 Gold Star Highway.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Heath. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Baumgartner.
Just briefly, I think in light of some of the concerns, many counselors raised, you know, public hearing responses to Groton Conservation Advocates, I think it's very important that moving forward, we do an assessment of what trees will ultimately come down for this project and look to replace those displaced trees, you know, as part of that more comprehensive plan that you've suggested and we've discussed quite extensively. So just kind of wanted to say that for the record and, yeah.
Great. It'll go through the normal permitting process and we can make that direction to the commissions or staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-457 excess property redevelopment, 517-529 Gold Star Highway, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 10C, 2019-468-1 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan Modification for Van Drivers. On page 18, Counselor Heath, please.
I'll make a motion for the resolution modifying the part-time seasonal pay plan for van drivers, whereas the parks and recreation staff recommended modifying the part-time seasonal pay plan for van drivers. And whereas recommendations including, or include increasing the start level for passenger drivers, licensed PSL drivers to 1495 from 1645, sorry, to 1495 and 1645 for commercial driver licenses, CDL drivers. Now therefore be resolved that the part-time seasonal pay plan will be modified effective August 11th to reflect the rates presented. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the part-time seasonal pay plan modification? And just for public knowledge, we've discussed this all in committee at the whole and went through this quite extensively. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2019-468 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan Modification Van Drivers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 10D, 2019-437-2 Mystic Way Resubdivision Phase 3 Acceptance of Public Improvements. This was originally on page 19, but you all have a handout that Mr. Burt left with just cleaning up some language, I believe. Correct, Mr. Burt?
Correct, reference to the town charter, so Mr. Burt said.
Thank you.
Resolution accepting public improvements for Mystic Way Resubdivision Phase 3. Whereas the Mystic Way Resubdivision was approved by the Planning Commission on May 25, 2004. And whereas the town charter, section 5 dot 4 dot 10, provides authority to the town council to accept all roads and open spaces as town property if said roads and open spaces are included in a subdivision that has been approved by the Planning Commission. And whereas on June 25, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended acceptance of Regatta Circle, 215 linear feet and Knott's Landing Circle, 180 linear feet, serving lots in Phase 3 of the Mystic Way Resubdivision. Now therefore be resolved that the town council hereby accepts Regatta Circle and Knott's Landing Circle in the Mystic Way Resubdivision. I so move.
Second. Moved by Opry and seconded by Parker. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Counselor Atwater.
I just have to say, the sense I live on Knott's Landing, it's nice to finally be part of the town.
All right, 10E, 2019-482, one, Reduction in Size of Planning and Zoning Commission, scheduling a public hearing. Again, this was on page 20, but they have, Mr. Burt again, has something with cleaned up language that was distributed. Counselor Schmidt, oh, Counselor Atwater, I'm sorry.
Resolution to set a public hearing to reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Whereas the town council passed ordinance number 286 on June 20, 2017, to designate the Planning Commission as the Planning and Zoning Commission and to abolish the zoning commission effective January 4, 2019. The town council later amended this ordinance to allow additional time to complete the regulatory rewrite until July 31, 2019. And whereas the current ordinance authorizes the membership of the new PZC as seven regular members and three alternate, alternate members. And whereas recruiting volunteers for boards and commissions is challenging and land use boards and commissions traditionally have five regular members and three alternate members for efficiency. And whereas the town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services made a request to reduce the size of the combined planning and zoning commission from seven to five regular members. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby sets a public hearing for September 10, 2019, to amend the ordinance to reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission from seven regular members to five regular members. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on this item? And again, we discussed this in committee of the whole. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2019-482 Reduction in Size of the Planning and Zoning Commission, scheduling a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. All right, we are done with regular business. We are on to other business. I have two items I wanted to discuss. Is there anybody else who wanted to go first with their other business? Counselor Franco.
I would like to bring forward the athletic field study that had previously been done. I believe it's possibly around five years ago or within that timeframe. I believe it's probably still a current study that we can look into and I'd like it to be distributed off to the council. I've received communications with many people regarding athletic fields in Groton and I've also been made aware that Groton is a very unique town where majority of the other towns have their park and recs fields and then the schools have their own fields. Groton has them all blended together and I think this might have been a way to save money over the years, but it's coming to pass that there is a lack of fields in our town and I think this has been going on for a very long time. And I was hoping that maybe this council might want to take it on and review it, research it and figure out what might be necessary to move forward. I can say that my, I, just personally, my son plays a sport and it's baseball at the high school. And I will say in the next couple of years with the baseball fields, there's going to be a massive shortage, at least for the schools. And the effect that when varsity goes away, usually freshmen and JV come into our town to play and that's two teams and we only have one field. So we're going to be short for the next two years of a field and so I think we need to find a short-term solutions for some things, as well as for softball that have been taken away from Cutler and Westside as well, and some long-term solutions as well. So, thank you.
We've been looking at fields, I think we've all been considering fields and it is something that we've been in need of for a great deal of time, which is why they did aquatic planes, but I agree, we do need some extra playing fields and I think that's been considered for Clotchester, if I'm not mistaken. Counselor Opry.
I just wanted to mention that thankfully, power four, the front entry is now open. The public works and our town manager worked very hard to make this happen, which is really great because of the big tournament coming, so we'll look a lot better for that. Two weeks, we have the junior tournament, which is a very special one. And I'm hoping now, I want people to understand that what's there now looks nice, but it's not the finished product. There will be more work done in the front, good tar and plantings and et cetera, but the front door is open. Business is going, food's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Heath.
I just wanted to comment to the town manager. In your weekly status report, page four, there is a permit application, I'm guessing, for crop protection noisemaker. So I was doing some reading on that and just want to advise you that there can be noise complaints from neighbors. So there are alternatives that could be looked into as well. It's page four. The Willow Springs Farm Crop Protection Noisemaker.
The noisemaker cannons at Little's.
Oh.
Correct, is that what you're?
But I think that's the one that Counselor, Atwater, you would ask them if they, is that the same one?
As of two weeks ago, they have not used it. We, in our neighborhood, heard what sounded like gunshots and there were three different neighbors felt the same thing. And I heard about this and I went up and spoke to them and they said they haven't used it this year. Now, that was two weeks ago, but I, it doesn't seem like they were really planning on using it the way that the fellow spoke to me, so. I just thought I'd mention it. Thank you.
Okay, somebody heard something, that's why I had to quit in that report.
So, I have, I have, oh, Counselor Baumgartner, go ahead. I'll go last.
Yeah, I had a conversation with several, several counselors, principally Mayor Granitowski and Counselor Schmidt about, in the past, I think several years ago, the town had an energy, energy committee that would look at making Groton, specifically its facilities, more energy efficient in the, in the years to come. And we had a presentation several months ago from a student who did an internship or fellowship with the town and did quite a bit of work. And I know that right now our resiliency coordinator here in the, in the town is going to start in with the school construction project. And so I think to the extent that we can be helpful and especially in terms of generating kind of ideas and pulling together an extensive preparing trust in the town on, you know, energy efficiency issues and sustainability issues, I think we ought to talk about outfitting our future school buildings and public buildings with solar panels and making our town more of a smart city. You know, at some point, we're going to have driverless cars and AI running the show and, you know, I think Groton's in a very unique position to be ahead of that curve. But, you know, I think it's incredibly important that many of these school buildings do have solar panels, are not just energy efficient, but to the greatest extent possible, zero emissions. There are many school buildings in the state and throughout the country that are actually net zero and, you know, zero emissions of carbon and greenhouse gases. So, you know, I don't know whether or not we need to relaunch an energy committee, but I think we should definitely look to have some kind of organized group to deliberate on these issues. Because at the end of the day, being green can also mean keeping a couple extra dollars in your pocket. It's proven by installing LEDs to replace incandescent lights, so have you. So just wanted to put that out there, see if there's an interest and maybe we can move forward with a referral to do something.
That's an excellent segue, but I'll, go ahead.
We would need a staff person who specializes in that to help. So it would, it would be tied, have to be tied on this person to go forward.
So, so the two things that I wanted to mention tonight, I have an idea that I would like town staff to consider. My turn.
I just wanted to tell Counselor Baumgartner that the resiliency commission did ask for that energy plan, so they do have that, so they are reviewing it.
The task force. So I've been receiving communication from the public about the trees, the forest canopy. I was startled by the amount of trees that came down. And I also happened to be reading some things online and reading about carbon capture and carbon sequestration. And what I would like to be considered is another possible use for the Noank excess property, the school property. I would like to have a consideration that that be reforested and turned into not a park with lawn and mowing, but reforest the whole property. It's six acres, we lost 12 acres on the merit property. We can't, we don't have 12 acres, but we do have six acres. And while staff is considering all the other options for the property, which is what they're in the process of doing now, I request that that be thrown in and considered as well. It would, it would recapture half of what we lost on the merit property. Tied in with that and going along with what Counselor Baumgartner suggested, we do have a sustainability position within the town government structure. However, that person has not been used to deal with sustainability issues. They have been used, kind of like a clerk of the works for various building projects and right now that person is working on the school buildings, which we need to have someone working on the school buildings. But I would request that we consider adding another position, which is a true sustainability position and possibly putting that under the manager or under the planning department, wherever the manager deems best appropriate. But whether budgeting for it now or building it into next year's budget, but someone that would be truly doing sustainability work for us, things like Counselor Baumgartner recommended, and supporting all the things that we want. I think we want to be carbon neutral.
Plenty to do.
We have, we have sea level rise going on. We've had complaints from people in Noank about more frequent flooding coming in just this past couple of weeks. So there are lots of things coming up and I think something I wanted to raise was I would like to see a position, a true sustainability position created in the town and we should fund that position so we have the expertise we need to move us forward with what we desire to do. Counselors of Perry.
I, you and I have talked about this, the park at the Noank Gardens. I would, you know, I agree that we need trees and we have to plant trees and we have to preserve trees. However, I think that an area like that, that is right in the middle of a densely populated zone where people are living and children are growing, we need a park that's accessible to people and we need a place for people to walk and to, to sit and enjoy being in a peaceful spot. So I don't think we should go straight to a simple reforestation, but we should design a park that includes trees. But it should be designed so that people can enjoy it. I mean, that is an expenditure of a good deal of money and we're all talking about trying to keep our expenditures down, but there are about trying to keep our expenditures down. But there are ways to get volunteers and to get public support for it. And I think that the best thing we could do with that piece of property is to develop a park where kids can play and where older folks can just gamble through and sit down in a comfortable place with a little air and room around them and enjoy the, being outdoors. So I, and I also think it would be nice if we could develop some horticulture there. It could be some plantings of some, some attractive flowers for shrubs. I don't think we should rush into making it a wilderness, and it's too small an area to be a wilderness. But it would make much more of a dent in the habitability of this town if we could concentrate on developing areas like that.
All I'm asking is for staff to consider the idea, along with all their other considerations, because they're in the process of going through it right now and looking at all the potential uses for the property. So that's my request.
Consider it as a, as a park.
I'm sure they have. I'm sure they have. Counselor Franco.
Well, since we're all throwing things out there, why don't they consider it for athletic fields, too? Maybe football could be played up there. Or baseball, or soccer, or basketball. Well, they could put it up there.
I know, you know, that was talked about already in the committee. The concern is it's very small. You wouldn't get much there, and it's out of the way for parks and recs to maintain it. They'd rather be more centrally located, especially with Claude Chester, you know, as we can do more stuff where you bring all the equipment to one area.
There used to be a school there, though, right?
Right. But we've spread out, you know, every time, you know, we're at, well, we could always add more staff. We're at the point where we can't maintain further out anymore. That's just.
But aren't they maintaining it right now?
They are, but it's becoming a struggle. And it's actually to a sports field, which is different equipment than what they do. It's a little more to it.
So they're having a struggle right now as just mowing it?
Yeah. According to Jerry Locken and Mark Berry, they, they were not interested in that. They'd rather get it centralized.
So as a park or developing it as a park? So developing it further as a park would be, put more work into it, and they don't have that?
Well, there is the option, though, of the fire department there has some interest in taking over. They do our tennis court. It's our property where the tennis court and, what else is there? Basketball court? Is that what it is? Basketball courts there down by the fire station. That's our property that they maintain, and they have reached out to us, so that's also an option that, I wouldn't, you know, honestly, I don't think the committee is likely to, to come up with a recommendation for us to maintain a park there. It'd probably, there'd be the fire department or else development, one or the other, from where it's heading so far.
Counselor Atwater.
I just, I guess as Counselor Franco said, we're throwing it out there. I was interested when the people were speaking from Walker Hill Road, and they were saying that they wanted mixed use and commercial and so forth. But then they refer to the fact that the downtown has a lot of empty space. Well, that's a conflict. We talk about ball fields, which is open space, but then we also talk about putting in trees. We talk about hiring new people, but you also have to consider the fact that if you do that, you're going to raise your taxes because you have to pay for it. And I guess I'd just like to say, in all of what we do, I really wish people would, would think, try to think of the whole picture and not what their personal feeling is. You know, I love sports, so I want this, or I love trees, so I want a park, or whatever. It's, it's got to be for the, for the good of, of the whole community, of all of Groton. And I just, I just feel that that needs to be part of our process.
Yep. And I love the planet, so we need a sustainable sustainability coordinator. Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:06.